I call the Committee of the Whole to order on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five at six P M. in Council Chambers. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Murphy, Messias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
There is no remote electronic attendance tonight, so we will move to public comment. Chief Galt, has anyone signed up for public comment? Moving on to the Crown Agenda items, does anyone have any questions about the agenda on the Committee of the Whole? Okay, we'll start with item six point one. A resolution approving the special event application for the city's Spring Classics Event scheduled for Saturday, April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, that is sponsored by Empowering Abilities, closing certain streets, more particularly described herein to vehicular traffic, and authorizing the use of public right-of-way in conjunction with said event.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you. As you mentioned, this is a, a street closure for the, the city's Spring Classic Event, April nineteenth. This is closing the cul-de-sac at the northern end of Seventeenth Street from six forty-five A M. to one P M. Um, this is a five K. That's the start of the race. They'll proceed over the bridge and back, and it's also the, uh, end of the race.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Finch, seconded by Alderperson Castro. Any discussion? Hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry. Alderperson Schmidt.
Uh, thank you. I, um, want to notify the council that, uh, through my work, I have a business relationship with Empowering Abilities. Uh, but as I'm not an owner and it's not a financial matter, it's not in any way a conflict of interest, but I wanted to notify.
So he does not need to recuse himself on this one?
That is correct.
Correct.
Not need to recuse himself on that basis.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Moving on to item six point two, a resolution declaring vehicles and non-motorized assets as shown on Exhibit A, attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference as surplus property, and authorizing the disposal of said vehicles and non-motorized assets by the Assistant Director of Public Works through legal disposal process that is most advantageous to the city, whether sealed bid, auction, negotiation, or otherwise. Mister Schmidt?
Good evening. Uh, so this is kind of the, the continuation of our vehicle replacement program. Uh, first step would be, um, really at the beginning of the budget process, Public Works meet with other departments to determine their needs for vehicles and equipment. Um, the next step would then be the recommendation to council during the budget process. Um, at the workshop, i- it's approved for the next year's budget. Uh, Public Works begins to acquire the vehicles and equipment, um, at the beginning of January. It continues throughout the year, uh, which leads us to tonight. Um, usually annually, we have a, a list that we put together of vehicles and equipment that are no longer of use to the city, or might be end of useful life. Um, so we are looking, uh, re- recommending to pass a resolution declaring that vehicles and equipment, um, on Exhibit A are surplus, and we can start the process for disposal.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Finch, and seconded by Alderperson Messias. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item six point three, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a contract with Langman Construction, Inc. for project number one four eight one, two thousand twenty-five patching program for the amount of one million, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars. Is that Mister Dryer, or Barry?
Uh, Mister Dryer, please.
I can, I can answer that. This is our twenty twenty-five program for pavement patching and restoring, uh, water utility, uh, cuts that are taking over the, uh, winters, uh, winter time. We've budgeted one point two million dollars. Bits came in at one point two, three nine million. And we'll, uh, work to keep that, uh, uh, utility tax under at this seven hundred fifty thousand dollar amount.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Finch, seconded by Alderperson Messias. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item six point four, a resolution approving change order number two and final with Langman Construction, Inc. for project number one, three, seven, zero, Sixteenth Street and Avenue of the City's intersection reconfiguration for the amount of twenty-three, twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-six cents.
This was a pedestrian improvement project at Avenue of the Cities that we'd, uh, wanted to get going for a number of years. Finally got to it. Uh, this is the final change order for twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars is to adjust for, uh, additional sidewalk and quantities in the field, uh, doing some additional electrical work, additional pedestrian push buttons, and some additional traffic control.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Finch, seconded by Alderperson Castro. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item six point five, a resolution authorizing the mayor and chief of police to execute an equitable sharing agreement and certification between the federal government and the City of Moline Police Department, setting forth the requirements for participation in the equitable sharing program and certifying all receipts and expenditures of federal forfeiture funds, property, and interest during the last fiscal year. Chief Galt.
Good evening, council. Uh, so this is an annual certification we're required by the Department of Justice to present to you, to have filed. I think every year, I apologize to you for the, uh, timeliness of this. It comes in a very short window, so you will also see this, uh, on items not for consent because of the deadline that they release the packet for the form, and then the requirement that it be returned doesn't necessarily meet up with our council agenda, so you'll see it on both tonight. Uh, so you see before you, we have, uh, two DOJ, uh, treasury fun- are we on a justice fund and a treasury fund? The justice fund are federal forfeiture funds that we receive, uh, from cases that are federal, uh, criminal prosecutions that result in forfeiture. Uh, we only took in about two thousand dollars of that, and then the other eight, roughly about eight thousand dollars, uh, was a U S. Secret Service Fund, uh, which is a, uh, uh, treasury fund that the Secret Service provides as funds for forensic computer unit, uh, and work that's done associated with that. So the goal of that is to, to receive it and spend it. Uh, in the same year, we had a small balance left over from the end of the year, uh, that, uh, was two thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars in twenty twenty-three. They carried over, uh, and so you see that reflected in the council bill. So staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Finch, seconded by Alderperson Razak. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item six point six, an ordinance amending Chapter twenty-two offenses miscellaneous of the Moline Code of Ordinances by increasing the number of Class B incidental tobacco dealers licenses in the city at the request of O D C, Q C, L L C, D B A, O D C, Q C. Mister Atkins?
The mayor had a question for me earlier, and, and I think, uh, Alderman Schmidt as well, and I wanted to make sure that everyone received the same information. Uh, specifically, the question was, I thought this was a head shop. Why do we have a Class B, uh, tobacco license? And the reason for that is that although Class A and Class B, uh, tobacco licenses are mutually exclusive, uh, the way in which they're defined, if you have sufficient sales or you use sufficient display space to be Class A, then you're not going to be Class B, because Class B is that you're using less display space and making less of your, uh, total revenues from, uh, tobacco sales. But there is nothing to prevent Class A with Class C, Class C being, uh, the head shop license. So, an individual, uh, right now could not have a Class A and a Class C because there is a moratorium on Class As for the remainder of this year. But, there is nothing preventing Class A and Class C, or Class B and Class C, uh, from being held together, from there being a head shop that has either a, uh, Class A license or a Class B license. So, uh, I know it's a little bit confusing, but this is actually acceptable, uh, under your ordinances.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Timian, and seconded by Alderperson Finch. Any discussion? Alderperson Timian?
So, just to clarify, the, this is for the B license, but they don't actually have a C license? Cause we, we need, we asked them to resubmit after their denial, uh, about a month or two ago. So, will the B be sufficient, or do they also need a C?
There would also need to be a C license for the head shop. However, oh, I believe that the clerk wanted to say something regarding this.
He does have the Class C. He has paid for it, and we do have it on file.
Because he was a pre-existing business, he didn't have to go through the approval?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Got it.
Okay, that helps a lot.
I was gonna say that he did have to have the Class C, but apparently.
It was a, it was a carve-out during the changing of the ordinance.
Any other discussion? Oh, Alderperson Schmidt.
Thank you clerk for that clarification, cause I, a lot of the same questions, and, um, like knowing it's an existing business, and now with the delineation between the B and the A, um, I think it was very hard before, even though he was saying, I don't want to sell that much to, like, well, that's hard to let it go, and just say, yeah, go have that A and do whatever you want, and risk turning into that, uh, just a vape shop again, which I think that's what we really have enough of. Um, I, we, in the future, we'll have conversations about whether we need more head shops too, but I thi- but as an existing business who's going there, I'm very glad we're able to support him, and that I think this is a place where, um, the new delineation of the multiple licenses has made it easier for us to support a local business who just wanted that anyway. So, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item six point seven, an ordinance vacating one thousand eight hundred thirty square foot platted drainage and utility easement at twenty-nine thirty forty-first Street. Mister Mathias?
Yes, thanks. So, Brian Trappkas has applied for this easement vacation. Um, he is in the process of building a fourplex and a duplex on this lot, which is just north of the library, on the east side of forty-first Street. So, as you can see from my explanation there, the existing lot that was planted in two thousand two has that easement to the north. He's effectively developing on that lot, and then the next easement, or excuse me, the next property to the north, this easement ends up being in the way there, and so when we remove this, he'll be able to build over it. We don't need any rezoning here, the, the zoned office, so it'll be fine for him to build there other than this easement. So, we're just asking for your approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Finch, seconded by Alderperson Schmidt. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six point eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a purchase and sale agreement with N B I Plus, L L C, for property located at seven hundred fifteenth Street, Moline, pin number zero eight, three, two, four, one, nine, zero, zero, one, for a purchase price of ten dollars plus the installation of an asphalt parking lot with an estimated cost of forty-three thousand, five hundred dollars at N B I Plus, L L C's adjacent property located at fifteen fourteen Seventh Avenue, Moline, Illinois, and authorizing all appropriate city officials, officers, corporation counsel, and staff to do all things necessary to complete each of the city's responsibilities and enforce each of the city's expected benefits as referred to in such agreement. Mister Atkins?
So this is a, uh, purchase that is, other than the purchase price, nothing really unusual. Uh, the purchase price, as you've just heard, is actually the ten dollars plus installing, uh, a parking lot. This is, if I'm, I think, that direction? Uh, anyway, it's, it's the intersection of, uh, of, uh, Seventh and, and Fifteenth, and the, uh, parking lot is going to be installed where there already is parking. It's essentially a, a gravel or dirt lot, and it's going to, uh, now be a paved lot. Uh, the, overall, it should look better, and, uh, this is essentially, uh, providing service or, uh, product in place of, uh, a purchase price of, of cash.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Finch, seconded by Alderperson Messias. Any discussion? Hearing none.
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. Again, Alderperson Schmidt.
Yeah, um, I'm sorry, this only just occurred to me as we're listening to Mister Atkins. Um, the, the cost of installing the, um, parking lot would exceed the anticipated cost of what that parcel would be appraised at, correct?
That's, that's the, the estimate that we have. Um, it could end up being a little bit more, a little bit less than that, but that was the best estimate that was available.
But the, and the parcel we're receiving, though, has a value that exceeds that, right?
Yes, yeah.
I just want to make a hundred percent sure. I figured it would become a ten, so.
That was my question.
Okay. Alderperson Timian?
Uh, just procedurally, this is a very small lot. Are we then going to put out bid to do this, since we're responsible, or how does, or do we just reimburse them so that they do it?
It, it's going to be part of the Seventh Avenue reconstruction?
Oh, got it. That makes sense. Okay, so it's part of that project.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the, the money was put into the, the budget for that.
Okay, that makes a lot more sense.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item six point nine, an ordinance authorizing the City of Moline to borrow funds from the Illinois Public Water Supply Loan Program to finance lead service line replacements for the next eighteen years.
So, for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, Moline was granted three million dollars in forgivable funds to replace, uh, hopefully, we're hoping around three hundred lead service lines. But in order for us to receive that forgivable loan, it has to be treated like a regular loan, so this is just authorizing the city, if it wishes to pursue that route in the future, to be able to borrow forgivable loans.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Schmidt, seconded by Alderperson Finch. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item six point ten, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a licensing agreement with Pathway Church to construct, install, use, and maintain a sign for advertising identification purposes only at forty-three thirty twelfth Avenue that is located in public right-of-way.
Go ahead, Chris.
So, we received a sign permit to install a sign at this location. There is an existing sign here already for the church. Uh, so my staff correctly recognized that we didn't have a licensing agreement for it. Um, we're okay with the location of the sign. We just want to make sure that the agreement's in place to allow it there. And we did, I know Barry had a question on utility, um, conflicts. We did check with engineering and utilities, and they didn't see any, any conflict with utilities, even in an emergency situation, so. Recommended from us is to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Alderperson Finch, seconded by Alderperson Castro. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
So that concludes our Committee of the Whole agenda. We now move to our council meeting. I call the meeting of the City Council for February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five to order. Please stand, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Do you have an invocation, Alderperson Timian?
Hi, this might surprise you, but I do not.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Alderperson Murphy, Messias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Your Honor, I request the approval of Committee of the Whole, Council, and Executive Session Meeting Minutes of February four, twenty twenty-five, and Council Meeting Minutes of February eleven, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Finch, seconded by Alderperson Castro. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Chief Galt, is there any public comment?
Your Honor, I request the approval of consent agenda items thirteen point one through thirteen point three inclusively.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Schmidt, seconded by Alderperson Finch. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Non-consent agenda, second reading ordinances. Item number fifteen point one, an ordinance amending Chapter twenty-two offenses miscellaneous of the Moline Code of Ordinances by increasing the number of Class B incidental tobacco dealers licenses in the city at the request of Haas Smoke Shop, Inc., D B A, Moline Liquor Tobacco and Vape.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Finch, seconded by Alderperson Razak. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Item number fifteen point two, an ordinance amending Chapter twenty-two offenses miscellaneous of the Moline Code of Ordinances by increasing the number of Class B incidental tobacco dealers licenses in the city at the request of Gray Store, L L C, D B A, Vantage Point.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Finch, seconded by Alderperson Castro. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Item number fifteen point three, an ordinance amending Chapter twenty-two offenses miscellaneous of the Moline Code of Ordinances by increasing the number of Class B incidental tobacco dealers licenses in the city at the request of J S Liquor and Food, Inc., D B A, Five Star Liquor and Food.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by, uh, motion by Alderperson Finch, seconded by Alderperson Schmidt. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Item number sixteen point one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and chief of police to execute an equitable sharing agreement and certification between the federal government and the City of Moline Police Department, setting forth the requirements for participation in the equitable sharing program and certifying all receipts and expenditures of federal for- federal forfeiture funds, property, and interest during the last fiscal year.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Finch, seconded by Alderperson Razak. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Item number sixteen point two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a purchase and sale agreement with N B I Plus, L L C, for property located at seven hundred fifteenth Street, Moline, Illinois, pin number zero eight dash three, two, dash four, one, nine, dash zero, zero, one, for a purchase price of ten dollars plus the installation of an asphalt parking lot with an estimated cost of forty-three thousand, five hundred dollars at N B I Plus, L L C's adjacent property located at fifteen fourteen Seventh Avenue, Moline, Illinois, and authorizing all appropriate city officials, officers, corporation counsel, and staff to do all things necessary to complete each of the city's responsibilities and enforce each of the city's expected benefits as referred to in such agreement.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Finch, seconded by Alderperson Castro. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Item number sixteen point three, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a contract with Precision Pavement Markings, Inc. for project number fourteen seventy-seven, twenty twenty-five pavement marking program for the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred dollars and zero cents.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Finch, seconded by Alderperson Razak. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Non-consent agenda, first reading ordinances. Item number seventeen point one, an ordinance implementing a municipal grocery retailer's occupation tax and a municipal grocery service occupation tax.
Motion to advance the second reading.
Second.
Mo- motion to advance the second reading by Alderperson Finch, and seconded by Alderperson Razak. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion to advance the second reading carries, and that's all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Hey, that brings us to Agenda Item eighteen, miscellaneous business. I do not have any miscellaneous business tonight. Just thank you to the council for being so gracious as I, um, sit in for the mayor tonight.
Thank you.
Alderperson Messias?
Uh, nothing, Your Honor.
Alderperson Razak?
Um, last week, I had the opportunity to visit, uh, humility with some board member of, uh, M C D C. It was a great opportunity, and really, they are doing that in the result between those most vulnerable people of our community who does not have place to sleep. And they, they expressed their gratitude that city has, uh, approved last year forty-four thousand dollar. That helps a lot, so I believe that city will continue support this organization.
Thank you. Alderperson Timian?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I just want to express my gratitude for the snow angels who came out and, um, shoveled multiple times over the last week, and it was, um, I, it was, it was good. It was a fun time, and, uh, still encourage you all to, to, to sign up and help some people in your community. Thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor. Just, um, again, thank you to Public Works, who are also the snow angels, um, for getting out there. I didn't have any, um, calls or, um, emails or anything, so, um, that's a great snow event, so, thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Dan, for stepping up today and taking over this, in the big chair. I think you did a great job. Appreciate that. Also, just wanted to say that, um, I know it is, there's a lot of illnesses going around, and very appreciative of all our staff who are dealing with that, and dealing with, I'm sure, the, um, absences of coworkers.